We are live.
Okay, well, welcome, everybody, to the special Encinitas City Council meeting at 6:00 on Tuesday, November 18th. Happy to be here with all of you. May we please have a roll call?
Yes, Mayor. Do not see Councilmember Hubbard. I will mark her as absent. Councilmember Mosca?
Present.
Councilmember Cranz?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Hensy?
Here.
And Mayor Blakespear?
Here.
And I'm just gonna double check. I do not see Councilmember Hubbard, so all members are present with the exception of Councilmember Hubbard.
Okay. Thank you. If you would like to all rise and join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
My family join me for that pledge? Okay. And now, do we have any oral communications?
No, we do not.
Okay, so let's go to our first agenda item, item 4A. Would you like to take that, city clerk?
Yes. So this item before you is the certification of the election results for the November 3rd, 2020, general municipal election. The November 3rd ballot included two candidates for the office of mayor, two candidates for city council member District 1, two candidates for city council member District 2, and one ballot measure, Measure H, regarding cannabis operations in the city of Encinitas. The results of the election were certified by the San Diego County Register of Voters on December 3rd, and those results reflect that. Catherine Blakespear was elected to the office of mayor for a full two-year term of office. Toni Cranz was elected as city council member for District 1 for a full four-year term of office. Kelly Hensy was elected as city council member for District 2 for a full four-year term of office, and Measure H was passed. With the passing of Measure H, which will become ordinance 2020-18, this ordinance will include the full text of the measure, which will be codified as Chapter 9.25 titled Cannabis Activity Zoning Ordinance of Encinitas in the Encinitas Municipal Code. And just so you're aware, staff is currently analyzing the terms of Measure H for timing and steps for implementation, including necessary coastal commission actions. So the action before you this evening is to adopt Resolution 2020-97, reciting the facts of the November 3rd, 2020, general municipal election, declaring the results and such other matters as provided by law. And that concludes my report.
Would you like a motion on that?
Absolutely.
I will move the staff's recommendation, the resolution showing stating the results of the most recent election. And I also want to state, just note that Councilmember Hubbard has joined us as well.
She has joined, yes. I will mark her as... Let me do the roll call really quick. Present, and I will record her.
Your motion.
Oh, great.
And then let's go back here, and get to the motion. Okay, so Councilmember Mosca made a motion.
And Councilmember Hubbard second.
Yeah.
Second, and there we go. Sorry about that. Thank you. Everything's a little... All right, we'll start vote. Councilmember Hubbard?
Yes.
Councilmember Mosca?
Yes.
Councilmember Cranz? Councilmember Cranz?
We can't hear you.
I think he can't get it off mute.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hensy?
Yes.
And Mayor Blakespear?
Yes.
All right, motion carries unanimously. So now we can move to item 4B, which is the city clerk, myself administering the oath of office to those of you elected. So we will start with Mayor Blakespear.
Okay. I'm gonna get my family all together for me. So I'd like to just introduce my family here. This is my son Oliver. This is my mom Tricia. My daughter Ava, and my husband Jeremy. And we're all very honored to be here to stand with you while I take both of them.
Great. Okay, so Mayor Blakespear, even though you can't see me, I am raising my right hand, so if you would raise your right hand as well, and then repeat after me. I state your name, do solemnly swear...
I, Catherine Blakespear, do solemnly swear...
That I will support and defend...
That I will support and defend...
The Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic...
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic...
That I will bear true faith and allegiance...
That I will bear true faith and allegiance...
To the Constitution of the United States...
To the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
That I will take this obligation freely...
That I take this obligation freely...
Without any mental reservation...
Without any mental reservation...
Or purpose of evasion...
Or purpose of evasion...
And that I will well and faithfully...
And that I will well and faithfully...
Discharge the duties...
Discharge the duties...
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations, you are sworn in, and I'm giving you a virtual handshake.
Thank you.
And thank you... And thank you to the family members who sacrificed so much.
Yes, thank you to the family members who sacrificed so much. That's a good point. Thank you, Tony.
All right, so next we have Councilmember Toni Cranz. We'll let you get set up. Let's give him a moment. Here we go.
Hello. And this is... And my granddaughter Kyra May. And so I am ready with my right hand raised.
Okay, great. I state your name, do solemnly swear...
I, Toni Cranz, do solemnly swear...
That I will support and defend...
That I will support and defend...
The Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic...
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic...
That I will bear true faith and allegiance...
That I will bear true faith and allegiance...
To the Constitution of the United States...
To the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
That I will take this obligation freely...
And that I will take this obligation freely...
Without any mental reservation...
Without any mental reservation...
Or purpose of evasion...
Or purpose of evasion...
And that I will well and faithfully...
And that I will well and faithfully...
Discharge the duties...
Discharge the duties...
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations, and I am also giving you a virtual handshake.
Very good. Thank you, dear.
Congratulations. All right. And then Councilmember... Councilmember Hensy, whenever you are ready.
Okay, I'll take my virtual background off and welcome everybody into our living room. It's not quite as festive as my fellow... But I'm here with my partner Nick, and my family members are watching from home.
Great. Yeah, there you go. Stand right there. That's perfect, that way. There you go. And then when you're ready, raise your right hand, Kelly. All right. I state your name, do solemnly swear...
I, Kelly Shay Hensy, do solemnly swear...
That I will support and defend...
That I will support and defend...
The Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic...
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic...
That I will bear true faith and allegiance...
That I will bear true faith and allegiance...
To the Constitution of the United States...
To the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
That I will take this obligation freely...
That I will take this obligation freely...
Without any mental reservation...
Without any mental reservation...
Or purpose of evasion...
Or purpose of evasion...
And that I will well and faithfully...
And that I will well and faithfully...
Discharge the duties...
Discharge the duties...
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations, and I'm giving you a virtual handshake as well.
Well, that was fun.
Yep. First time ever that I've done virtual swearing-in ceremony.
Yes, quite different. A lot of things different this year.
Absolutely.
Okay, well, should we go to the selection of the deputy mayor as the next one?
Yes. And so this item comes before us every year, and Deputy Mayor Hensy has served as deputy mayor this last year, so now council can select a new deputy mayor.
Well, thank you. I just wanted to say that Councilmember Hensy has done a great job. She got to be the president of the Water Board, and that's a really great way to get to know the whole water world when you're the deputy mayor, so I thank her for that. And also consulting on various matters and filling in for me and otherwise being a great deputy mayor. So thank you very much, Councilmember Hensy, for your commitment. And I'd like to nominate...
It was an honor, and I was really actually very sad to not be the deputy mayor anymore because it really does carry a lot of weight. I know, it's... Turn it over to the next person.
So I would like to nominate Toni Cranz to be the deputy mayor. He has not been the deputy mayor in a while, and he does a great job, knows the city extremely well, was just reelected, and I would like to make a motion and see if he would accept the deputy mayor position.
I'll second that motion.
I'm honored by the nomination, and I really appreciate it. And if it is a successful vote, I look forward to helping you with efforts to keep the city moving forward.
Great. Okay, so we can start voting. Councilmember Hubbard?
Absolutely, yes.
Councilmember Mosca?
Yes.
Councilmember Cranz?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hensy?
Yes.
And Mayor Blakespear?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you again, I'm honored.
Good. I look forward to it. Okay, next item is item 4D, which is the special committee meetings and board appointments. Does the city clerk want to say anything about this?
Included in your agenda packet is a list of the current appointments, and so now is the time we can go over and decide if anybody wants to make changes, if the ad hoc committees that are going, if there's any that are no longer operative. So now is the time to make all of those appointments.
Okay, so I'll call on any of my council members who have any boards that they... or commitments they would like to give up.
How do I put my hand up?
We can... I'll call on you, Jody. Go ahead.
Okay. Given my current health situation, I think the wise thing to do is any of the boards that I am on, the Santa Lejo Board, the CSA 17, I think it's better that I hand them off to somebody else.
Okay. I might suggest that Councilmember Hensy take the commitments of Councilmember Hubbard.
Yes, I'm happy to do that. I serve as Councilmember Hubbard's alternate on a lot of those committees already, and so I've had the chance to engage, and I would be happy to take those on officially.
And I think you will really enjoy the Santa Lejo Water Campus. You can... You'll learn a lot, and it's a great board to be on. You and Mike Thornton, who runs it, is... He's a... Yeah. I think you'll enjoy it.
I will look forward to it.
So let's go through... So that means CSA 17 will be... Hensy will be the representative, so we need an alternate. The same with North County Dispatch JPA. So do you want alternates for those?
Are you asking me?
I'm the whole council.
I mean, I think if any... I... I'm happy not to take anything more. I don't know what the rest of you think, but I... It's also possible, I would think, that Councilmember Hubbard could be the alternate.
Yeah.
Right? Because there might be occasional, but for the most part, I mean, the reality is the primary does this stuff almost all the time. So, and those things only meet quarterly, so we could just flip the order there, unless Councilmember Mosca or Cranz wanted them.
I would just say, if, you know, based on if Councilmember Hubbard, if there are any ones that... If you flip with Councilmember Hensy, and you're in the alternate spot, and there are ones that you don't believe that you want to be in the alternate spot, I believe those are roles that I fulfilled just recently, within the last year or two. Though there probably wouldn't be much, you know, of me getting up to speed, and I'd be happy to step in on CSA 17 or North County Dispatch or any one of those because I know all the folks around the table and can get up to speed pretty quickly.
I think that's a smart move. Just the next couple months at least, I know are gonna be really rough for me.
All right. I can step in as alternate on those unless, Tony, you want to step in on any one of those.
Oh, I'm finding... I've got my plate super duper full and a full-time job as well, so it's... I'm not looking to pick up any more opportunities.
Councilmember Cranz, could we put you as the alternate on Encino Wastewater? Or Councilmember Hensy?
I'd be happy to do that.
Councilmember Hensy will be the... Won't she... She'll be the primary.
Well, on Encino Wastewater, I have Blakespear and Mosca, and so then I can put... Councilmember Cranz, is that okay with you? Or Councilmember...
Sure, sure.
Okay. And then CSA 17 will be Hensy with Mosca as the alternate. North County Dispatch JPA will be Hensy with Mosca as the alternate. And then...
I can take the League of Cities ones that she has.
Okay, so then the League of Cities will be... Right now, League of California Cities, Hensy would be the representative and Mosca would be the alternate, or do you want to be the representative?
Well, it has League of Cities mayor/deputy mayor, and it has Hubbard, Mosca.
Yeah. It's typically the mayor and deputy mayor, but we haven't always done the mayor and deputy mayor, so I leave that to your discretion.
Do you... Mosca, do you want that one, or do you... What's your thought on that?
If you want to serve in that capacity, I will yield to you. It's not...
Okay, I'll take that.
As the representative?
Yeah.
Okay, and then Hensy as the alternate? Or Mosca?
Mosca as alternate.
Yeah, I can do that.
Yeah, I'll do that. And then League of California City Coastal Cities Issues Group? Hensy as the voting member, and then do you want to be the alternate to that?
Yeah, I can be the alternate. Yeah.
And then the last, Sandag Shoreline Preservation Group? Hensy is the advisory, and then Hubbard was the alternate. Do we have a alternate for that?
I could take that as a Sandag thing, unless someone else wants it. Oh, okay, I'll take it.
Okay. And then page eight, Sea Level Rise Subcommittee was Hubbard and Hensy. Does somebody want to take Hubbard's place on Sea Level Rise?
I can take that.
And then City Attorney Recruitment Subcommittee is Hubbard and Mosca. Somebody want to take Hubbard's place?
Councilmember Hubbard, did you want to just stick with that for now?
Uh, yeah, I can because I don't know where we're headed. That's something I could keep doing.
And then Cultural Tourism Committee is Hubbard and Hensy. Do you want to keep that, Councilmember Hubbard, or someone else take that?
You know, that Cultural, that Tourism Committee really could have just one of us. And problem for me is in the morning, and I constantly have conflicts with either doctor's appointments, infusions, or just getting out of bed after a PMO session. That's a really rough one for me. Which is why I've been handing it off to Councilwoman Hensy. Councilwoman Hensy for the last couple months.
Mayor, are you okay with just Councilmember Hensy?
I am.
Okay, and then finally, the Fire Governance Standing Subcommittee, which meets twice annually. That was Hubbard and Mosca, so we'll need someone on that.
I'll stay on that one.
Okay, and then I need one other.
I could take that.
The other thing too, Kelly, Councilmember Hensy, the Encino Wastewater, I think, Mayor Blakespear, I think either one of us can carry the full voting allowance for the six committees. Even if one of us was missing, Kelly would only have to go if both of us were not able to go. Right? Is that the case? Is that how you see it?
That's how I see it. Yeah, that she would go if neither of us could go. So that's very unlikely, but...
Just so you know, Kelly, that it's not gonna be much of a big deal because we... Because it would have to be both of us missing because one of us can carry the full voting amount.
Okay, that's fine. Just going back to cultural tourism real quick, I do think we should appoint somebody as the alternate because there were three occasions that it conflicted with something else that I had to do, and it turns out that the committee can't meet unless there is a representative from the council there. And so, you know, even if it's just one time next year, it would be great to have somebody just carry the...
I'm happy to be the second on that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And then just one clarification. Encino Wastewater Authority, I had Blakespear, Mosca, and Cranz as the alternate. Did you... Was that supposed to be Kelly, Councilmember Hensy, as the alternate?
Oh, I apologize. I thought we said Hensy, but I'm... Whatever it is, I'm fine.
Okay.
Is it...
Whatever they want. What do you guys want?
Kelly's fine. I mean, Kelly, you didn't mind me volunteering for that?
Sure, yeah, I'll take that on.
Okay, great.
Kathy, can I ask a question? In terms of the San Diego County Water Authority, when this vote is taken, will you transmit to them that I've been reappointed? Because I think that term, according to the board clerk, is up soon.
Absolutely, and Sandag's looking for the same. So tomorrow, between Anne Marie and I, we will make sure that everyone is notified of the appointment.
Thank you.
I have a question about the fire governance. Has anybody on the council already been doing that and wouldn't mind doing that instead of me?
It's... Well, it's both. I've been doing it from the beginning with, first with Mark Muir, and then with Jody. We meet... I think the goal is to be... To meet twice... Is it twice a year, Jody?
Yeah.
Twice a year.
I don't know that we have.
It hasn't been a huge burden, so just to kind of put that out there and, you know, and it hasn't been a huge amount of my time.
Okay, okay.
I have a comment that I think you'll all appreciate. CSA 17, I got an ambulance ride, which, you know, it's always good when you're on a board to actually use the services, and then you get to see how well they're working. So there were some... There were some hiccups. And I had a conference call with two of the people there, and Councilwoman Hensy, I'm gonna talk to you about it so you can bird dog it and keep track of some of the changes that I suggested to see if they actually happen. It was... They seem to be very open to it.
Yeah, I'm happy to do that. And also, Mayor Blakespear, I can take the Fire Governance Board off your plate too because they're sort of related.
Okay.
They are.
They are.
Between Fire, CSA 17, and Dispatch, there are a lot of the same folks involved.
Yeah, I'm happy to.
And then this one does require, just for a couple of the agencies, so we need a motion as the recommended action. So we do need a motion and a second for appointments to NCTD, and then also for Sandag, and then all the other recommendations. They just like to have specific motions for their respective committees.
Well, I would move that we appoint Mayor Blakespear, who will be the chair of Sandag for the next couple of years, as the primary at Sandag.
Second.
And I would move that we appoint Councilmember Cranz to NCTD for the next term.
Who is also the chair.
Second.
Yeah, so let's do the first one first. So that is NCTD, and let's vote on that. I want to make sure we have the alternate. Let me get to that one, excuse me. Let me through our... So that is Councilmember... So first, we were doing Sandag, I'm sorry, Councilmembers... Councilmember Cranz's motion, and that is for Mayor Blakespear as the representative, Councilmember Mosca as the alternate, and Councilmember Hensy as the second alternate. So that's the first motion, and then we will vote. Councilmember Hubbard?
Yes.
Councilmember Mosca?
Yes, and I was the second on that motion.
Okay, Councilmember Cranz?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hensy?
Yes.
And Mayor Blakespear?
Yes.
And that motion does carry unanimously. And then we will move to... The next one was NCTD. And that was Councilmember Hensy made the motion.
Second.
Councilmember Mosca? Approved. And NCTD is... Councilmember Cranz is the representative, and Councilmember Hensy as the alternate. And Councilmember Hubbard?
Yes.
Councilmember Mosca?
Yes.
Councilmember Cranz?
Yes.
Oh, I'm still saying Deputy Mayor Hensy. It's actually Councilmember Hensy?
Yes.
And Mayor Blakespear?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Let's put that record. And then we'll have one more motion, which is all the other regional boards and appointments and the standing subcommittees.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we'll vote. Councilmember Hubbard?
Yes.
Councilmember Mosca?
Yes.
Councilmember Cranz?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hensy?
Yes.
And Mayor Blakespear?
Yes.
And that motion carries unanimously.
Do we need a separate motion for County Water?
You know what? I was just gonna say, let's do one for San Diego County Water Authority, just to be safe. Sometimes they do like a separate motion or resolution. So we can... A motion for the San Diego County Water Authority, which is Councilmember Mosca as the representative.
I would move that we reappoint Councilmember Mosca to represent the city... The city at County Water Authority and San Diego Water District, I guess, is the real appointment.
And then do we have a second?
Second.
I'll second.
Who was that?
I seconded it. Yeah. This is the one board that doesn't have any alternate, right? And that's fine?
Correct.
Okay.
They can proxy it too. They can proxy it too.
Yeah, our, we have a proxy with Santa Fe Irrigation District. So if I'm absent, uh, Mike Hogan, Director Hogan from Santa Fe, uh, exercises that motion, that proxy.
Oh, I see.
We can vote. Councilmember Hubbard?
Yes.
Councilmember Mosca?
Yes.
Councilmember Krantz?
Yes.
Or Deputy Mayor Krantz, and uh, Councilmember Hensy?
Yes.
And Mayor Blake Spear?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay. Anything else on here, Kathy?
I think that covers it all.
It's amazing how fun and simple this is, because we all get along so well, so not, each one's not a knock down drag out. Um, okay, so now we're on to the next item on our agenda, right, which is the calendar.
Yes, and this is the cal, proposed calendar for 2021. Um, the only changes right now that we have, um, mainly because of COVID, and we don't know what the next few months are going to look like. Um, we just included the annual summer recess, which is canceling the meetings in July, and then in September, we had um, canceling the second and third Wednesdays. One was for Rosh Hashanah, and the other one was for Yom Kippur, and then um, we would keep the nine twenty second regular meeting, and then we would also add a regular meeting on the fifth Wednesday of September, which would be September twenty ninth. And then we were rec, recommending canceling November twenty fourth because of Thanksgiving, and then December twenty second because of Christmas.
With approval.
Second.
I just have a comment on it. Um, so um, so I just, um, I know that we've kind of gone, we've gone back and forth between either dark in July or dark in August. Um, I've just had the realization that a lot of other agencies are dark in August, uh, and there's probably the minority of agencies that are dark in, in July. I'm fine with July with kids. I think it's always been better for me. Uh, but then it's not always consistent with uh, with other, other schedules. So some of our other agencies will be dark in August, but then they're not dark in July, so they don't have to really still participate in meetings in July, um, and then they're dark in August. So. Uh, it's just that one inconsistency um, of moving it into July uh, from August time.
Well, do we know, do we have confirmation of uh, what the, what those agency's schedules will be? And, and maybe what we can do as we uh, get into March or April, we can revisit the issue of, of which uh, weeks to take off, because I think we have some flexibility on this, don't we?
Yes, you do. And that's why we're bringing it forward now, but as things change, um, we just can come back to council. We can cancel meetings, add meetings as necessary.
All right. Then I'm, I'm, I'm fine with that. Um, I, I, I do think County Water is, is dark in August and not July, uh, and there are several other uh, boards, and I, and I think most of our, I think Carlsbad um, is August. I think Solana Beach is August. I think a lot of the neighboring cities are August. July, again, made sense, because uh, as soon as kids are out for the summer, we're, we're generally kind of vacationing, uh, and so that's kind of a good time for me, but with COVID, uh, it's probably not going to be the case. Uh, and so, but uh, I'm, I'm fine with this, since there's flexibility of adjusting it down the line.
Okay, are we ready to vote?
Yes.
Council, Councilmember Hubbard?
Yes.
Councilmember Mosca?
Yes.
Count, uh, Deputy Mayor Krantz?
Yes.
Councilmember Hensy?
Yes.
And Mayor Blake Spear?
Yes.
And motion carries unanimously.
I would like to make a request, though, and have you consider the possibility, um, you know, give a little staff direction. I recently exchanged emails and spent some time on the Zoom, explaining to a member of the public, uh, the process for canceling meetings, and she was surprised that uh, we canceled a couple of meetings in um, uh, November, and. She wasn't familiar with the process that we go through in, in establishing this schedule, and I, I found, uh, looking for the resolutions that we um, adopted for the meeting schedule to be not all that easy to find in the archives, and I wonder if maybe somewhere on our, on our agenda and webcast page, we could have a link to. How the city council meeting dates are established and the resolutions, and, you know, when I let her know that there was, there's a city ordinance that covers how these, when we meet, and so on and so forth, it would, it would be great if that was at people's fingertips. So if people were complaining about cancellations of meetings or not of meetings, or how to come up with our schedule, I could point that, them in that direction, and then they could become informed. Um, she was uh, really appreciative of being able to better understand the process and that we weren't just willy-nilly canceling meetings, and um, so I would love it if there were a way to, to uh, point somebody in the direction to, to get, to get that information. We spent the last six months thinking a lot of criticism about cancellation, and, and it's, it's just a routine part of what we do every year is cancel a certain number of meetings, so um, it would be good if we could keep the public up to speed or get the public up to speed.
Um, I do include it on the City Clerk's public notice page, but I will, I will work with IT and we'll put it in a more public um, location on the website.
That would be good, and, and you know, having it in more than one place wouldn't be the end of the world, and if you send me a link, that would be great. I'll save it, and uh, I'll know where to go with people, so I thank you for that.
Absolutely.
You know, the other, the, the, just kind of dovetailing off that, the other confusion is that, that there, the only time when, when you go on the website, you can see all of the meetings for 2021, or in this case, you know, for 2020, and, and you can see all the regular meetings, and they'll say, oh, canceled. But it doesn't give you actually all of, all of the meetings uh, for 2020, and so the, the meetings that are actually being had, and so um, it would be nice to even, you know, uh, connected with uh, Deputy Mayor Krantz is saying, if we also had a link to the calendar for 2021, here are the dates that we'll be meeting.
That's also on the City Clerk's public webpage, because as soon as I update this calendar, I put it on that public notice page, but I'll try and find a link somewhere more um, visible. On the agendas and webcast page, it just shows the upcoming meetings, because it's on a recurring cycle. So it's like one meeting finishes, the next one pops up, but um, I'll work with IT and we can get a link on there that says 2021 schedule.
Thank you. Thank you.
And I, and also just make sure to um, talk about the search terms. So, you know, when you go to the search and you type in meeting schedule or something that it should, you should be able to find it that way, because I think sometimes it's not clear. People need to go to resolution or City Clerk webpage, or, you know, all that navigation is difficult.
Yeah, we can, I'll work with IT and we'll get something on that main, uh, with agendas and webcast page, so it's very visible.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. Anything else that, on calendar issues? No? Okay, so are we done with this meeting?
Yes, I'm done.
I think we might be. So we have a regular meeting tomorrow, uh, and I guess with that, we are adjourned. Congratulations, everybody.
Thanks. Congratulations.